There's nothing else.
Place.
You're right.
No, is this required?
It is now.
Okay, because I went to the A R C. They weren't.
No, they are. Part of the notes didn't manage this office.
Okay.
Required it in.
Good.
Turning it in every office.
I know he's, I know he's concerned that there's a lot of, a lot of people out. Very concerned.
So Chair Fletcher, I think we're ready when you are.
Hello.
Afternoon, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting of Monterey City Planning Commission to order. For September thirteenth. It's our four o'clock session. Can we do our roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Fletcher.
Present.
Vice Chair Millet.
But um.
Commissioner Freeman. Here, Commissioner Brassfield.
Here.
Commissioner Dawson.
You say Dawson.
Um, no, I said Brassfield first.
Oh, sorry.
I, the other mic mistake. Mike Brassfield is here.
Right, both my, both mics are present today.
Excellent.
And then Commissioner Latassa.
Present.
Great, and for city staff, we have Community Development Director Cole and myself, Recording Secretary Cleary.
Thank you.
As we could say, both mics are turned on.
Um, I have a technical issue. My screen does not work and.
Oh, no.
You want to sit here?
Press the button in the middle.
Why don't you sit here? All this. I have my, I have this.
Oh, you're right. I thought I'm. Okay, let's move you over here.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Today, the way the commission, we have a roast chair.
Okay. Speakers are on.
Sorry about that.
No worries. We'll get our stride going here. So I think we have a. First item on our agenda is our consent agenda. And approval of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to review the, uh, the minute.
Yes, of course.
Yeah.
Yep, and I have a motion for approval.
I'm so moved.
I'll second that.
There we go.
Do it.
First and the second, can we have? A vote on that roll call vote?
Yes, Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Millet.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
I'm Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Thank you. Those motion, those minutes, um, pass unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll be moving on to public. Comments for items not on the agenda, but first maybe if you could. Explain how people can call in.
Members of the public are encouraged to join our meetings via Zoom Gov as secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com slash city of Monterey with a ten second delay. And Comcast channel twenty-five with up to a ninety second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join to, join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has started, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial eight three three five six eight 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 six four toll free, then enter the webinar ID. Which is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. Once again, that phone number to call is eight three three five six eight 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 six four. And the webinar ID is one six one nine nine zero eight zero three nine. If that phone number doesn't work, there are more listed on the meeting agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at Monterey.org slash public meetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called upon in order of hands raised, and there is a three minute time limit for today's meeting. And just remember, whenever anyone is talking, either the commission or public, please make sure that your microphone is on, the green light should be on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, uh. The public may speak for a maximum of three minutes on any subject which is within the jurisdiction of the Monterey. Planning Commission and which is not on today's agenda. We have nobody in the audience. Uh, do we have anybody online that wants to make a public comment?
I didn't take my own advice. There are a few people on the line, but I do believe one of them is the applicant. So just a quick reminder, if you're already in the meeting, please use. At the bottom of your screen. And there's nobody joined by phone, no hands are raising, so I think it's safe to move on.
All right, we'll move on to public hearing. Item number three, which is consider three fifty Cali Principal Use Permit, U P twenty-two. Zero one three five to allow modifications to an existing Dish Wireless LLC Personal Wireless Service Facility. And the applicant is Adam Ehrlich. J five, extra partners on behalf of Dish. And the owner of San Carlos Associates California Partnership Visitor Accommodation Facility Zoning District. Commercial General Plan, Yanni Land Use Designation, and this is exempt from CEQA. Can I have the staff report?
Yes, um. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jerry Hiddelman. I'm a contract planner with the city. Uh, let me share my screen and I'll. Give you a PowerPoint presentation. Can everybody see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Stated, uh, this is a modification of an existing Dish Wireless Facility at three fifty Cali Principal. And. The permit number is twenty-two dash zero one three five. This project site location is the Marriott Hotel, which is surrounded by Pacific Street, West Franklin Street, Cali Principal. And Del Monte Avenue. I'll move into the project description. The applicant is proposing to remove six existing panel antennas on the building facade. And re, and install six new panels, as I'll show you in further slides. Removal of some remote radio units and installation of twelve new ones. Um, they're doing. Some other support equipment and over voltage protector. They're taking out exact, actually two existing equipment cabinets and replacing them with one new one. And. Uh, some other minor support equipment, and this will be an upgrade of the facility from a four G to a five G facility. As you can see, the owner, the property is San Carlos Associates California Partnership. Applicant Adam Ehrlich, uh, he's with J five Infrastructure Partners, Wireless Carrier is Dish Wireless LLC, that's their official name. And as stated by the chair, we're in the B A F, our visitor accommodation facility zone. And general plan designation is general commercial. Now, this proposal is considered to be an eligible facilities request, and this is under the federal law. Uh, section sixty-four oh nine A of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act nineteen of twenty-twelve. And, um, under this definition, this is not a substantial change. They're modifying, replacing equipment, as you can see, and we are. Under a sixty day shot clock, so the application was submitted August eleventh, so it happened till. October twelfth to make a decision on this project. Um, here is a site plan of, of the project site, and again, Pacific Street, Franklin, West Franklin and Cali. Principal. And it's a little small, but here's two antennas facing Pacific Street. This is where the cabinet is that will be replaced, two cabinets with one. And then we do have two. Antennas facing West Franklin Street and two on the building facade facing Cali Principal. This slide shows the layout of the existing antennas on the facade, so again, two facing this direction, two. Facing Franklin and then two facing Cali Principal. And very simply, they will be replacing them with. New antennas that. Will be supplying them with the ability to have five G service. Here's the elevations, so the east elevation. Facing West Franklin Street, or, um, actually, this is facing Cali Principal. You can see the two antennas here. That would be replaced, and here's the new equipment cabinet up top. This is facing West Franklin Street, again. Two antennas existing, two to be replaced. These are the ones facing Cali Principal, and these are the ones facing West Pacific Street right here. The equipment cabinet. The applicant did submit photo simulations. This is a view from Franklin Street. Kind of northeast at, towards the property. And again, existing, could see the two antennas here, and they will be replaced by the two antennas here. I'd like to point out that the antennas. Will be painted to match the, uh, facade of the building, a- as are the existing ones. It's another view. Looking towards the property in this direction. Here's the project site. And. You can see the existing, or a little bit small here, but they will be replaced by antennas that will again be. Uh, painted to match the facade. This is the final view. Looking from this direction towards the project site. This would be the antennas that are facing Pacific Street, and there's the. Existing, and again, the new antennas. See some of the other antennas in the distance over here. Uh, we did have a radio. Frequency or E M E study, uh, submitted. And we found, um, through, uh, our review and a third party review by a, an engineer. Under contract with the city that the new antennas meet all Federal Communications Commission, FCC, public and occupational requirement limits. Uh, no pub, public access to the roof or building facade where the antennas and support equipment are located. So we don't have any public access. Uh, and. There will be RF warning signage and barriers required to protect workers accessing the rooftop. Now be the only means for accessing the support equipment for these antennas on the side. Uh, as you know, we do have an elevation view. Required for all wireless. Projects, and this shows, again, the blue would be the public limit. Here's the building roof, it'll be above where any hotel rooms are, and the yellow represents the occupational limit. So, you know. The antennas will be on the building facade, so they want to make sure that any workers are aware of that, be turned off if they want to access these areas. And of course, no public will be able to access these areas as well. This is a site view of that radio frequency array coming off the antennas. Again, over ten stories high. And they, this will be the occupational limit. Will not be exceeded. Until after. Until this point, and then the. Public limits will. Uh, be exceeded only until this point. And there is a three story building over here. But again, the antennas will be up at above the ten story limit. So that's right here, and that building would be approximately in this location. So you can see again, the. Radio frequency arrays are quite a bit above the building. Do have some radio frequency conditions in the resolution that. A post installation, radio frequency, frequency report is required to ensure that we are. Um, going to be, um, seeing the same results as I just showed you. Uh, there will be warning signs. Required for workers accessing the roof area, and then antenna installation area on the roof. Would be restricted and secured. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt a resolution approving use permit. P A twenty-two oh one three five to allow these modifications to an existing Dish Personal Wireless. Service Facility at three fifty Cali Principal. Um, thank you, I'm available for questions, and I believe the applicant is on the call as well on the. Zoom meeting, uh, along with their RF engineer, if you have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Yes.
Um. The, the fact that we're going from four, four G to five G, does that mean that this is a, a stronger signal coming? Than, than there is presently?
There, there is a, a stronger signal. I couldn't specify exactly how much, but. That's why we had, we carefully reviewed that RF report, radio frequency report. And perhaps their RF engineer can, uh. Articulate the difference between the two.
Any other questions?
I, I have a few, Jerry.
Terry.
So.
Yes.
I, so there's an exhibit D. And especially, uh, pages. I'd like you to look at exhibit D, pages seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, if you could bring those up on the screen.
Yeah. Is that part of the staff report?
Well, um, no, it's, it's one of the, um, consultant reports, I think.
Seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
Was that packet page?
So that's packet page.
Boy, I didn't get the packet.
Yeah, it's okay, I have it. Um. It's packet page eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-one.
Okay. Take a look.
Just going through the plans now. Is that a, a report, I would imagine?
Yes, that's one of the, um, exhibit D is I combined the antenna mount analysis. Um, that was submitted, and then the later ver, the additional is the structural mapping. Is also, it starts on page ninety-five, so it's the antenna mountain analysis prepared by J five Infrastructure. Partners, which was. A technical report. For the mounting of the facility.
Okay, great. Let's take a look at those. Those, this start right here?
Yeah, that's exhibit D.
Thank you. Yeah, keep.
Yeah, that's the end, the last three sheets of that exhibit.
Okay. Am I getting close?
Yes, it's, I think if you just go to the end, you'll find it.
There's six more pages, you're about.
Here we go.
Right. Is that page eighteen, eighty-nine? I think that might be it.
Well, it's, it, there are three photographs, so let's keep on going.
Three photos.
Maybe I, I screwed things up here somehow.
Oh.
Photographs of. The building.
Yeah, I don't see that. Jerry, could you hold up that picture for staff?
Well, here's, this is page, um. Twenty.
Twenty.
Exhibit D, page twenty. So, oh, there, uh, keep on going. You're very close now.
Oh, yeah, okay. There we go.
Yeah, the very last actual four sheets are, are the sheets I'd like to focus on.
Okay, great. Well, they definitely gave us a lot of photos here.
Okay, there's the first one. So stop there.
Yes.
So there's, um. That's a picture of the, kind of a roof deck area, um, but keep, so go to the next one. There's a doorway, and then the next one. Okay, this is, so this sheet, and then go to the next one, housekeeping. There is really those last two sheets. So when, um. See on this photograph on page twenty of exhibit D, how there's a main bulk of the building is gold colored.
Mm-hmm.
And, or, and then to the left, sort of below that, is a, a more tan colored section of the building.
Yes.
So my concern, if, if you could. Use your pointer to, to see the upper right portion of the tan part. No, no, that's the gold part there. See, there's how there's a hotel room right there?
Mm-hmm.
So, so that's what I'm concerned about. It's like that. I don't see. How the engineering drawings. Address. You know, they have the, if you go to the, uh. The, we, I don't want you to toggle back right now, but there's some of those, um. What are they called? The, um.
It's fine.
Well, no, they're actually, they're kind of like that, but they're actually, oh, there they are, okay, so. So if you look at the, um. There are three bubbles there, and the one in the middle. And the blue part is what I'm concerned about. See how the blue part appears to cross over. That tan colored part of the building that I was referring to.
Mm-hmm.
That there's a vertical distance between them, but it's not clear to me the relationship between that blue bubble and that one tan. You know, uppermost part of that, uh, part of the building.
Yeah, well, the blue part would be up here, and this is that. Um, I believe that's the upper part right there.
Yeah.
I'm correct.
It's, it's funny, I don't even see how that elevation relates to this photograph, so it's the truth. If, can you go back to that one elevation with the blue? Okay, Dan, you're an architect. Can you relate this photograph to that drawing?
Uh, no.
So what, am I, I am an architect too. I don't understand. Uh, maybe it's just my inability to read plans. There's something going on here that's kind of mysterious to me.
Well, it makes the building appear flat.
Well, yeah, that's the way elevations are, but, I mean, there's all this stuff going on in that. Drawing that, um. Well, anyways, so, so the, Jerry, I, I don't mean to belabor this.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
Current is, is that one tan colored part of the building, and just to make sure. That these bubbles aren't going over that part of the building.
Yes.
And to, it, just to finish then, to look at that one elevation with the very bright blue and yellow parts. It, it appears as though the answer would be no. But the thing that confounds me, i- if you could go back to that elevation with the bright blue and yellow again.
Yes.
Not that one, but the other, the elevation of the, but there. So that's. You know, when I look at this. Photograph, I just don't see. How this, um. I, I must be misreading my plan somehow. I just don't see. How this, um. Elevation relates to this photograph I'm looking to. It's, I don't know what's going on, it's, uh. I, I, again, I must be misreading it in some, some way.
And I would suggest that the one on the left appears to be larger than the one on the right. To scale.
Yeah.
Is it a more powerful transmitter? What?
See, what I was hoping was looking at this, uh, RF projection from elevation view. When you look at it, you would expect to see. On the right. Some, uh, the right part of that elevation, some sort of a, a version of that sort of tan and golden part that I'm talking about.
It's on a different street.
Yeah. I was assuming, but that, that doesn't make sense really, because this.
Here's.
Going, uh, uh, Franklin.
Yeah, here is what I understand, um, when we reviewed it, what's going on. This is. Facing towards Pacific Street. So we have some two antennas here, and then. This is facing store, towards Cali Principal out this way. Then there's some antennas here, and that would be the ones that were facing towards us. And that relates to this building facade with the tan below it.
Right.
But, you know, it would be the same exact array as you see here, just on this side of the building. And here is where the top of that. You know, little facade element is projecting out right there.
Right, well, I, I, I don't mean to throw confusion into just the, now, that elevation, but it's, um, I'm puzzled by it.
Well, that elevation is clearly drawn in.
You're concerned about the verticality?
I think that elevation, can you go back to that elevation?
Sure.
With the blue and, yeah.
It's not even close to what is.
I don't know, yeah, it's, the, the problem I have with that elevation is it, it doesn't seem to reflect. The building that this, this thing is being put on. And, and I, you know, sometimes. You can be looking at one elevation, because it's a very big boxy building, and oh, no, it's the other one. But it's, you know, this is the elevation going up Franklin Street. I can tell, I could see all the sort of reference points there.
Yeah, here's. Here's the elevation we're looking at, it's right there.
Right.
And it pops out a little bit, but the antennas are up in this direction over here. It's not. So the. Elevation that way at all.
Can you go back to that black and white elevation with the blue and the yellow? Okay, there. See, that's, that elevation doesn't show this building that we're looking at in the photograph.
No.
And I'm, I'm sorry to be troublesome, but that's the case, I think.
No, you're being troublesome at all. I figure we're asked to analyze this stuff, but we should at least have accurate information to be able to do that. Yeah. Find it really disturbing that this is incorrect. Here's, here's again, the elevations. Here's, here's again, the elevations that the engineer used and, and the RF engineer as well, right here. So you can see the arrays come out like this and this, and this is exactly what they used right here.
Like they made up a building to go underneath to do the very intricate drawing of the new equipment.
Right. Well.
Maybe this, my main, this would help. Here's, here's the exact elevation right here.
Oh, yeah.
And you can, you can see that the steps in the building aren't reflective in your elevation at all.
Right. So that photograph you have on the screen right now?
Yes.
It's exactly to the other photograph on sheet twenty of exhibit B. So there's some correlation of information going on here, but not those elevations. Those are something else. I don't.
Not, you can see this toggle between the elevation and this image that you have on the screen right now, and you can see that they're not.
See how to the right of that tan part, how there's a blank stucco wall?
Right.
That's about, I don't know, sixty feet high by ten feet wide. That doesn't appear on that elevation. So there's something screwy going on there.
Go back here.
And you could also see there, there's a whole set of windows in rooms missing all the way across the top of that facade.
Right. So I, I know, I don't mean to make trouble here, but my main concern is that tan part of the building, that upper, those apartments are, they're actually hotel rooms in the upper. And I was thinking maybe that photograph of the ironing board inside a room was somehow going, there's no reference to those photographs of what they meant or why they were there in their report. So this report is, is not good. Just the exhibits that they're showing are inconsistent.
And if I may suggest, those images, including the, the round red, that's a flat image. Is it more like a balloon as far as the direction of the RF?
Yes. So the RF goes, you know, horizontally out from the antennas is what they're trying to depict here. But I can see maybe this elevation is a little bit off, but I think this is the area that projects out right here.
Yeah. No, this is way off. I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Perhaps we could have the applicant elaborate on those.
Any other questions for Jerry?
Yep. Mr. Chair, I do have a couple.
Yes.
Um, the material that we received is a little different than the numbers that Jerry showed. And one of the things that I jarred my mind when I looked at those was, what is the definition of significant change? When you look at, if it's a one-to-one, I understand that, but the original was six, six and then down below fifteen, which the numbers just didn't add up as a replacement. So do we have the idea, concept that when people are submitting to update these different transmitters and receivers? What is it when it's a one-to-one? And what if it becomes? I recall Tim basically saying, one project was actually a new one because of the numbers didn't match up. But first of all, do we cover that in our ordinance? And secondarily, should we be looking at, if someone comes in and wants to replace six with twelve, which got my mind originally going in that direction? Where do we draw the line?
So the FCC regulations define a sixty-four oh nine application and that's found on pages fourteen, fifteen of your packet. So example, one of the FCC criteria is the proposed co-location or modification increases the overall height more than ten percent of the height of one additional array not to exceed twenty feet, whichever is greater. So you actually can increase the size of the facility as long as it's within those parameters and it's considered a sixty-four oh nine. The second is the proposed co-location or modification increases the width more than twenty feet from the edge of the wireless support structure or the width of the wireless support structure at the level of the appurtenance, whichever is greater. So they can get wider and they can get taller and still consider sixty-four oh nine application. The proposed co-location or modification involves the installation of more than one standard number of equipment cabinets for the technology involved not to exceed four, so they can extend to four cabinets.
Thanks, Jim.
Location or modification involves excavation outside the current boundaries of the site. So in this case, they weren't really doing that. The proposed co-location or modification would defeat the concealment element of your deployment. The proposed co-location or modification complies with all prior conditions of approval. And the proposed co-location or modification complies with local non-discretionary code. So those are the criteria in the FCC that are reflected in our ordinance. And we use to evaluate our mine applications.
Thank you, ma'am.
Once, once it's determined that it's a sixty-four oh nine, we can't stop it.
Yeah.
It's correct. It's, we have to, we have to consider the application within sixty days. So it's different than a new facility, which is a hundred and fifty days. And it's under just separate parts of the law.
Thank you. I suggested the numbers on the original material through me is to the number of pieces of equipment. And that was, so I tried to understand the idea, what is a significant change?
Yeah, I could point out that the number of cabinets is actually two now and they're going down to one cabinet. And they, they can't exceed more than four new cabinets. So I think we're okay from the, like Kim stated, from the perspective of the sixty-four oh nine regulations.
Any other questions for staff? Jerry?
Yes.
Do you have a question for staff?
No.
Shall we ask if the applicant would like to presentation?
Sure.
Yeah.
Jennifer, are you checking if the applicant's available? It's okay.
The applicant is under raised, so Adam will allow you to speak. You should unmute and then be able to have the floor.
Thank you. Hi, can you hear me? Yes. Okay. I'm Adam Merlich. I'm with J five Infrastructure Partners and I am the applicant. I applied on behalf of Dish Wireless. I heard some of the concerns, but I didn't quite get the specific details of them. I was, I asked Dish to have a RF engineer present to, to answer any questions or give a presentation. Is there anybody online representing Dish Wireless in the, as the RF engineer?
There are a few extra people on the line as attendees. So once again, if you're in the Zoom meeting, you can raise your hand. There is a button. Since you're joined by computer, if you are with Dish, please raise your hand. Yes, I got one.
All right. So maybe we'll let that person answer any of the questions, some of the questions that were asked.
Yes, I'm Jeff Dieter. I'm sorry if I pronounced your name wrong. But you should be able to speak.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Very good. I am not a north engineer. We expected to have one on. I apologize. I don't know where he is right now. I am the regional zoning manager for Dish Wireless and happy to give you a layman's answer as best I can for any questions that you have. The concerns I heard specifically about the antennas on the side of the building. And first I'd like to thank Jerry, that was a, you know, a very articulate presentation on our application. The antennas, as some, one of you pointed out, do broadcast out away from the building. They are directional and they point away. So as one of you had mentioned, you know, well, what about the rooms down below? The antennas are like a flashlight in some ways. They would point out to the horizon. And that's what the yellow and blue cone represented. You know, absolutely not the best depiction of the drawing I've seen and we apologize for that. But what we are doing is replacing existing antennas that are already broadcasting out in that same direction with newer antennas that are actually more directional. They scatter less and it will be by the graphic and probably wasn't depicted in that EME report. But that's just the nature of a 5G antenna. They broadcast differently, more, more directly to the point of the receiver. And since we're putting the antennas in the position of the existing antennas and it was already been passed, you know, the EME, we're, you know, believing that this is a good location or a co-location, if you will, facility. The specific details on, from an engineering standpoint, I would have to defer and get a specific answer for you. If there's any other specific question I can answer, I'm more than happy to.
Any questions?
Yes.
I'm concerned about the scale of the, the drawing of the, of the broadcast EMF. Is that accurate? Is, is there, is there a, a vertical distance that, that that carries? That, that we can't mistake? It's ten, it's another.
I'm sorry you didn't hear that last part.
Did you reiterate your question? Okay, the, the scale of the, of the broadcast RF, RF map is important because if it's, if it's fifteen feet, it might be leaking it to one of those windows. If it's ten feet, probably not, but but we don't know what the scale is because that drawing is, is not accurate that we can see.
Is the, the drawing, I believe, had a scale, a grid scale behind the building. And that is produced by the engineer who created that. And it was further reviewed, that was Jerry, you said, by an outside third-party EME vendor to verify that what was being represented in terms of the broadcast of that EME, both the occupational and the public was accurate.
So Mr. Dieter, this is Kim Cole with the city of Monterey. Would Dish Wireless agree to halt the shot clock? And then you guys, the Dish would have the opportunity to amend the elevation drawing to accurately show the rooms on the south elevation facing West Franklin, I think is the one where it's been identified. And then that drawing can be, because the challenge that the commission is showing is the top two or three levels of rooms are not shown on the elevation drawing. So when they look at the, the RF analysis, it's unclear what the impact is directly on those rooms. I understand that everything has, has been reviewed and peer reviewed in terms of the calculations. But will Dish Wireless agree to halting the shot clock? And then resubmitting the, the drawing so we can have accurate information to base the decision upon?
I am not opposed to that. I'd like to ask if there's any other questions or details that I would further have to investigate on top of that, but in terms of pausing the shot clock to provide a more accurate, detailed depiction of the EME, I'm fine with that.
I believe there was another question asked about the difference in power for 5G and 4G.
Yeah, that was a great question.
Who wants to take the answering of that question on?
Mr. Aller can deal, or I don't know if you heard the question, but the question is, what is the difference in power between 4G and 5G? Are you able to answer that question or would you need your RF engineer to answer that question?
I would, I would defer the detail of that answer to my engineer or to a co-opet engineer. The output is mitigated by the radios. The radios are in the report what their power output happens to be. The frequencies, 4G, 5G, 2G, 1G are the same frequencies. The antenna just, you know, the technology behind it, the software behind it is what makes this 5G. And the antenna will behave slightly differently because they are phased array antennas versus a broadcast wide beam scatter antenna. So the actual output is, in my experience, has been negligible or actually less in the EME reports that I have seen. Again, that is my layman's experience building 5G sites for about the last three, four years. But if you want a assessment on as best we can understand, existing antennas that we're replacing with the output of the 5G, we can create that and put that in the same statement.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I think we should be able to find out how long the shot clock is going to be stayed. We don't want to keep this thing going forever. So in other words, when can we come back and have this matter answered?
I can have those answers in a matter of days.
All right. So then if we go to our next meeting, or at least within the next month, we'll have those answers.
Your calendar, Kim.
So our next meeting is September twenty-seventh. I published the packet next Tuesday, Wednesday, we start, or Wednesday, Thursday, going into production. We would need the revised drawings. It would be helpful by, well, this Friday. If that can't be done, then our next meeting after that is October eleventh.
Which is the day before the original shot clock, right?
Correct. So what we would be asking for is a delay of the shot clock until the revised elevation drawings and the revised RF report showing the revised elevation drawings are submitted. And so if that happens to be by, we'll go, we could go ahead and continue it to the twenty-seventh. Just seeing if they can do that. If they can't, then it would be, our next meeting's October eleventh.
Okay, let's, let's do that.
So I, actually, we should take public comments.
Yeah, okay.
I have another question.
All right. Terry, go ahead.
So thanks, Mr. Dieter. So I, can you see the screen that we're all looking at, Mr. Dieter?
I see all your faces.
Okay, great. So can somebody put up the, the one plan on attachment two that shows those bubble diagrams in relation to a aerial photograph of the building? No, that's, oh, there you go. Okay. So when you look at the photograph that's on the screen, there are three bubbles. It's the center bubble. That's my concern. And when you look in particular at the blue, smaller bubble, it appears to be crossing over a, a part of the building that now, if you could look, just sort of remember how that blue bubble looks. Now, if, if you could go to the photograph of that building, that's on page twenty of exhibit D. Jerry was going back and forth to that.
Well, here, here's, here's this. Here's the antennas.
Yeah, that, that's good enough. So see how there's a, there's a gold large sort of mass of the building and then there's a smaller, a couple, three stories down, there's sort of a tan part.
Yes, sir.
And so it's that upper right hotel room area that isn't clear to me. You know, it probably is because it's, it looks like there's some vertical distance there, but the drawings don't clearly show. You know, what would be nice to have is not only a, a correct version of the Franklin seat elevation that accurately shows the building, but also a Kaia Principal elevation that shows those, those antenna, you know, in relation to that, that sort of tan part of the building. I just don't see that information in this report. And that, that's what I'm after.
I understand. And yes, that is something we can produce in a graphic form that is much better depicted to reality. The, uh, as I think somebody had pointed out, the, maybe that was sharing. The EME, the antennas look like vertical planes. And as a result, they broadcast out in a horizontal plane away from the center. If you were to 3D model, it would kind of look like your hand pointing out with not much up and down. There's, you can see it there. The, as opposed to the downer looking view, which looks like a great big bubble, but that is at the elevation of the antenna. And it, there's, you can see how little yellow or blue there is above and below the antenna in that picture. And, you know, so if you rotated that 90 degrees toward you. You know, it is still significantly above what is depicted as the top of where those, where those are. But to your, it's still difficult to see. So, you know, to correct that and get a, uh, view from, um. Franklin and from, uh, Kelly Principal, we can create that to demonstrate, uh, how we are in clearance of, uh, uh. Correctly depicted building.
That would be great. The problem is, is that the inaccuracy of this current elevation that's on the screen. It, it makes, you know, like, you know, that's, if it's that inaccurate, then, you know. How are we to judge whether or not there's, uh, but what the impacts are going on? So that would be very helpful.
Not to mention people on the deck outside that room.
Exactly.
We are all satisfied with our questions that we've asked. And we are going to continue this. Is there any more public testimony on this item? Hands up or otherwise?
I don't see any hands up at the moment. Um.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, do we need a motion to continue?
All right, I'll make one. Um, I move to continue. The resolution for approval of use permit UP 220135. Allowing modifications to an existing Dish personal wireless service facility at 350 Kaya Principal. Pending, uh, further detailed drawings on the elevations of the three locations. Of the wireless.
And can we please continue that to September 27th?
To date certain, September 27th.
Thank you, Sandy. Yeah, we have a second. And can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, um, we have Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milic.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson. Oh, sorry, Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
And Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Great. This item is continued to date certain of September 27th at the planning commission meeting. I think you said October. I just want to clarify that's September 27th. September 27th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let the record, let the record also reflect that there has been a shot, shot clock waiver. By the applicant.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item number four in our public hearing. That's consider 600 Hawthorne Street Use Permit UP 2201. Six five to allow modifications to an existing Dish Wireless LLC. Personal wireless service facility. The applicant is Adam Erlich, J5 Infrastructure Partners on behalf of Dish Owner, First Baptist Church of Monterey. And this is, uh, Zoned R3, um. It's residential medium, uh, general plan, land use designations, and it's exempt from CEQA. Okay.
Staff is recommending this be continued to September 27th, um, 2022. As you'll note, there's no staff report in your. Um, we did notice that the project and then as we were writing the report. Um, we found an inconsistency that we wanted rectified. So that's, um. Underway and we hope to have that done for September 27th.
And do we need to have a motion and?
If you could have a motion and second continuing it to September 27th, that would be helpful.
Commissioners can have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to continue. This item. Uh, 600 Hawthorne Street, uh, Use Permit UP 22 dash 0165. To the September 27th agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. Can I have a second? There we go. Vote, please.
Definitely. Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milic.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Thank you. This item is continued to September 27th, 2022 as well.
Thank you. Okay, that completes our afternoon agenda.
Thank you.
We'll stand in recess until 7:00 PM. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good call.